Okay, I'd like to call this April 1st Council Work Session in order. Do I give a motion to adjourn this meeting? April Fools. Lumberman needs 30 seconds, so I'm going to get you to go to the podium. Are you to that podium?
Thank you. John Fenningham for Lumberman Associates. The application for a waiver of land development relates to a sawdust collection silo on the original 1989 parcel. We have submitted the, an updated site plan. Your engineer has reviewed and provided a letter. We're going to note the plan further, but we requested a session tomorrow morning and we're going to work with the engineer tomorrow morning and also request that this application be on the agenda for Monday night's public meeting.
Okay, so what we're going to try to do is work through this tomorrow. It'll be an agenda item for Monday, and hopefully we can get it resolved, or we could table it on Monday and it'll get resolved in May, but I'm confident that, I think tomorrow with our solicitor, manager, and I'll invite a couple of council members, maybe we can get this resolved.
And we're confident we can work with the borough and get this resolved. All right?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
I'll hold you guys up.
Attorney Tom Hacker on behalf of the applicant. With me is Brian Myers from Land Corps Engineering Services, who is our project engineer. The project before you tonight is a redevelopment project involving three tax parcels located at 1200 Bristol Pike in the borough's NC Neighborhood Commercial and HC2 Highway Commercial East Zoning District. We're proposing to demolish the existing buildings and construct a new 4,000 square foot building in its place. The existing and the proposed use is a retail store, which is by right in the NC and HC2 district. The project before, coming before council this evening, did go before the zoning hearing board to obtain some zoning relief that was necessary. It's also been through the planning commission with a recommendation, the council to approve it. If there's any more details you'd like about the plan, I can have Brian highlight the plan for you or answer any questions. We've under, we have received a couple of review letters from the borough's engineering consultant, and the last review letter, which I have dated January 2nd, and it is very clean. There are a couple of open items that still need to be accomplished, and upon approval by council of this plan, then we would expect to complete those items, which also include requesting council to vacate an alley as well as a old paper street that has been on this property since, I think, sometime in the 1920s and is never, ever opened. So we'll have a couple of other issues to take care of, but assuming council is fairly inclined to approve the plan, then we only have a few cleanup items left to do.
I think that what you guys are proposing will look beautiful on that corner. It's going to beautify the corner. It's a gateway coming into town, and I think the alley and the paper street is only a nuisance for the borough. See, I have no problem with anything that you can, you want to, you want to do there. It's going to look so much nicer. Now that it's cleared out, it really, you could start saying, oh, you know, it's a big corner, I think it'll look very nice.
Great, thank you.
Do I have any questions on that?
This is the proposed Pasco's Battery Warehouse?
Yes, it is.
The building is down, right? The building's down.
Yes. Everybody nod at their head in unison.
Not nodding, because it looks, it looks really nice.
Yeah, it was a nice one, so we're glad that.
Yeah, it has been a nice one, no question about it.
Anybody else have any questions on this? So we'll make that an agenda item to be voted on Wednesday and Monday, and I don't see any issue with, if they had an issue, they would have brought it up tonight.
Council, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Mr. Pezz.
Good evening. Bill Pezz, the president raising the bar. First, I want to say how thrilled I am with Tom Hacker's presentation there. That's, that's indicative of the interest that we're generating in town. People are coming here, they want to invest money, and that's going to be a real enhancement to the gateway, as you said, and we're really thrilled about that. I just want to make a quick announcement. On May 23rd, and I know that's a long way off, but we want people to save the date, we're going to be having an event at the Center for the Arts, we think is special. It's called the Taste of Bristol. Our goal is to get every restaurant in town to participate. They're going to have a small plates type of affair, and people are going to be able to taste the best of at least 12 restaurants in Bristol Borough. So it's going to be a nice night, and we're doing it as a way to showcase and honor two very special people in town. We're doing it in conjunction with the Bristol Riverside Theater. We're not going to announce yet who those two people are, but it's going to be one person from the performing arts and one person from the visual arts. So it's going to be a real nice night, it's going to be affordable, and we want the public to know so they can circle their calendars, save the date, and hopefully buy a ticket. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak on anything?
Hi, everybody. I'm Michael Gorman, Mill Street. I'm here because I'm very proud to announce, proud in my part, that I'm going to be running for council on the West Ward. And I just want to let people know a little bit more about me if they don't already. Being a part of the impact of what's happening on the business, in the business district and on Mill Street, I just want to take the impact of that and the success that I've had with working with various groups, like the Lions, the Scholarship Fund, and things like that. I want to be able to have the impact and want people to know that I intend to bring it into every street and every neighborhood. I think it's important, not limited just to that, my board, but I think it's so important that Bristol has a wonder, it's a wonderful place to be. It's growing and expanding, and the people here just make a difference. And after having a business here for 18 years and now a resident, and the really cool thing now is that I also found out that I have relatives that I didn't know. So I really feel connected and feel that this is my, the perfect time and opportunity to take the, my West Ward into the future and make an impact, not only in the business district, but every neighborhood and every street. And I'd like to close it with, I don't know how long it's been, it's been over a decade. I, I worked on one of the first projects when I came to Bristol with my design firm, is that we worked on this building, and I'm very proud to see it, but more importantly, this is such a pretty room that I did, that I'm hoping to spend a lot more time in it. Thank you.
Anybody else on this side of the room would like to speak? Okay, that ends public participation. And just so you know, that everything that Michael has, has ever done for us, has done for us, was at no cost to the borough. And he does a lot for the entire town, a lot of people that he does design work for, and the firehouse when they were renovating the number three firehouse, all the time he put into that was at no cost. So I wish you luck and success in your election. Okay, Lorraine?
I just wanted to talk about Radcliffe Court. McGrath is doing a fabulous job there, and I'm thrilled about the new homes that are going to be in that area. A lot of people have been going through, a lot of deposits have been made, the continued success in that area. And also, Mill Run has, I've seen a lot of work being done there, and I'm thrilled about it. So hopefully, they said that maybe in the fall, they would have the two-story part of the building open, and we're hoping that the fall to the end of the year, we'll, we'll see some opening there. That's all I have.
Dave?
Mr. President, on the, on the, on that Radcliffe development, I was over at St. Mark's there. I ran into a guy, Frank, who lost $30,000, and he was wondering, and I told him it's two different builders, but he, and he did put a deposit down on a new project, but he was hoping for some type of, I don't know, little bonus or something. Have you, have you heard anything on that?
I men, I mentioned this numerous times on the floor.
Yeah, we talked about it.
That we met with Frank also. When we met with the bankruptcy attorney, we told them, our main concern, excuse me, was that a lot of good people from Bristol put some hard-earned, excuse me, money down on that property. And they assured us that until they get their money, which they feel confident that they'll get back, any money that's left at the end of that project will go towards the people that put money out. Now, I don't know how many million that they're owed, but I think that they're going to be successful there. I think they're going to sell homes there, which we're all hoping. And I'm also hoping that they get money back. I also asked that, I asked Kevin, which is the bankruptcy attorney, that can, if they buy another home, can they give them a deal on that home? You know, can they take that $30,000 off the home? And he said there's no way they can do it. They're, they're being controlled by a federal judge. So the federal judge is determining how this money gets allocated, and at the end, they're hoping the profit that is made on that gets distributed through people that not only put homes down, but people that worked on that project that did not get paid.
Thank you.
It's sad, but that's where we are.
Okay, appreciate that.
Herbie, let me go. I apologize, I missed you.
Okay. Just a couple of things. One is on the smoke alarms and the carbon monoxide alarms. We're basically out of smoke alarms now, so we don't have any available. If somebody needs to replace them, they're going to have to go out and purchase them. We do have a couple in reserve that we keep on the fire truck so that 3:00 in the morning, if a detector goes bad, we're not leaving that person exposed until they can get to the store. We do have plenty of CO alarms. What we're finding right now is the CO alarms that we installed between five to seven years ago are reaching their end of life. Usually what happens is they'll give two beeps, a pause, two beeps. If the person, if you change your battery and it still does, continues to do that, that means that it, the detector's at the end of its life. So a lot of them, for some reason, have decided to go bad like 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning, and the people hear the beeping, and they, they call 911, and so we're out there changing them then. So this is just a heads up that if it does two beeps, stops, a normal carbon monoxide alarm will be four or five beeps. That indicates you have, you have carbon monoxide. And then the last thing I just wanted, we just sponsored an autism for first responders class. The class was excellent, and it provided a lot of good information in, for first responders and actually general public, if you have to deal with somebody who's in the autistic spectrum. And April is autism month, so it was timely, and it will benefit all of the emergency responders.
That's great.
That's the only thing I have.
Glad to hear that. Any questions for Herbie?
I just want to thank Herbie and his crew for taking care of my mom, her house. Thank you very much.
Herbie, I have a question. So are we getting more smoke detectors, or where are we at with this?
I have some money left from the carbon monoxide grant, and instead of buying an additional carbon monoxides, I'm going to put in a modification to see if they'll grant us. It would allow us to buy about 225 additional smoke alarms, and that's, we're going to try to do that.
And what's the cost of them?
The smoke alarms, I think they're somewhere around 15. We get a really good price because we, we bought bulk, but it's somewhere around, I think, 15 to $17. But I have enough money to buy about 225 of them.
And how long you think they would last?
Not, not real long. It just, you know, we still, we still find a lot of detectors that are like 10 years old or more than 10 years old, and they all need to be replaced, and we replace them when we, when we come across those or if people need them.
This has been such a great program for the seniors of this town. I, I think it's amazing what you've got, what you've done with this, because, you know, they're unlimited income.
When we're done with the program, we'll have, we'll have provided 2,500 carbon monoxide alarms and about 4,000 smoke alarms at no cost to the residents.
Thank you very much.
There are all grants that Herbie applied for.
I know, that's.
You know, for the borough, on behalf of the borough. And I don't know if there's any new ones out there or not.
Grants.
For grants.
Yeah, there's, the, the next cycle is, they're in middle cycle right now, and the next cycle, we'll take a look at possibly doing another one.
Well, for some reason, if you can't move money around, maybe we can get some private funding donated to your fire company to buy them. Let me know.
Okay.
Chief?
As you know, last week, they had an incident in the township, a double shooting, and there were some associations, some individuals in our town, just by friendships and relationships. We were extremely heavy this weekend because of the warm weather, so we had a large presence out, and it seemed to do the job for us. Also, that subject's in custody, so that's another aspect of it that was taken down on Sunday morning. Other than that, the only other issue I'd ask is that it's getting warm out, kids are out on their bikes, pedestrian traffic is way up. Just everybody, please use a little bit more caution when driving through the borough. That's it.
Any questions for the chief? Chief, the only thing I have is, you said summer, you know, the warm weather's coming, we're ready to hit the streets, you know, running.
Yeah, well, I just, I just advised the mayor tonight, as it is with the Bristol Borough, and our police department having part-timers, we holiday, we hire quality people, especially our part-time officers, and we were unfortunate and fortunate for him. We just were advised tonight we'll be losing Ian Stanley, one of our part-time officers, so we'll be in the hiring process again and in training process, but we do have officers gearing up for this spring and the summer with the bikes, so we have that, it's going out, so we're confident.
Let me ask you, I don't know if this is a contract issue or not, I'm not sure, and I'm sure you're well aware, it is from being down ashore in Tom's River. All your shore points have young kids, 18 years old, 19 years old, they don't carry a gun, but they're on bikes, they have radios, they go around. If there's an issue, they radio a cop. Is that something that we could implement in town?
Really not a model that's used in the state of Pennsylvania. State of New Jersey has Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3 officers, and they are trained through the Police Training Commission. The state of Pennsylvania is the MOPAC, the Municipal Police Officer Training Commission. The officers that are trained as full-time officers receive the same training as part-time officers. So they are pretty much looked at by the state of Pennsylvania as the same. So the, your question, I don't know where you're going with it, is where the problem...
I'm not trying to cut hours, I'm not trying...
No, I understand that.
I'm just saying for coverage, just to have these people...
It's nothing, the best you'd be able to do would be nothing more than a set of eyes and ears.
That's all I'm looking for.
And because they'd have no enforcement power, authority, other than maybe, other than making part of the parking authority, that's the only thing you can do.
But I'm saying, like, we had a town watch years ago, and people rode around town, right, Joe, and they, they see something, they get on the radio and report it. I'm not looking for them to arrest anybody, stop anybody, just...
I, I know where you're going with it. I would say the only, sometimes you have overzealous people that get involved in that, which has been my experience with it, and I also think that the one thing I've learned about my three years in this borough is that there's not much that the neighbor doesn't know, that the, our neighborhood watch is pretty much 10,000 strong. I'm kind of confident in that.
I know that.
Without even being formalized, so I'll leave it at that.
I wanted to ask you about car break-ins. Not, they're really not car break-ins. People are leaving their doors unlocked to their cars.
It's always a problem. We had one reported on the, up in Harriman last week.
There were two, I know, that happened. Somebody didn't contact you. They even go up your driveway and feel your car handle, you know, the handle. So if you lock your door, they'll move to the next person, you know what I mean?
That's 99% of the problem. People lock their houses and lock their home, or their vehicles, it pretty much take away the problem when it comes to that.
That's just the point I wanted to make.
I appreciate it.
Don't leave your computers or your pocketbook sitting in your car.
Wallets, you know.
Radios. It's just an invitation for somebody to break, steal it if you don't lock your car.
Cash.
Any more questions for the chief or anything? Joe, you want to go, or you want me to go through council?
Let's go through council first.
Greg, what do you have?
Just to echo Councilwoman Cullen's cautious optimism about Mill Run, you know, we, we met a couple of weeks ago, we, we talked about this on the floor, but let them know that we were not satisfied with the pace of things, and they seemed receptive, and we said last time that we were cautiously optimistic from the reaction we got, and it does appear as if, at least since that meeting, they have took, taken our words to heart, and they've actually started to act, which is, you know, it is, like I said, cautious optimism at this point in time. Things are moving, still maybe not as fast as we'd like, but it looks a lot better now than it did, let's say, two weeks ago, so happy to see that. Sorry, Mr. Dillon just left. Maybe Amanda could answer this. The PICO excavation on Radcliffe Street?
Yeah.
Do you, do you have an update on that, or?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't get an update from PICO specifically, but I know you're talking about in front of the Radcliffe Court development, right?
Yes. We did hear from McGrath and from the developer saying that they did notify PICO and that they would be out to take a look at it.
When was that?
Take care of it. Two days ago, maybe.
Oh, it was recent?
Yeah, it was just a few days ago.
Yeah, I just think it's important, you know, that, that people understand as well that it's kind of a challenging spot because it's a state road.
Exactly.
It's, you know, PICO, and, and, you know, people want us to act, and we are certainly following up on it, and Mr. Dillon's been active, and I know you've been active, and Lorraine and I have been active.
The borough is well aware of it, and it's, you know, it's just a matter of getting PICO back, and, and again, like you said, it's challenging because it's a state road also, so really the borough has no say in it.
Mr. Dillon has been on this for weeks now, so it's not like we're, we don't know it's happening.
Right.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
I think the last meeting we had with Mill Run, when you and Lorraine were there with the developer, and I think you let, read them to riot act, I think everybody's getting the message, so you guys did a good job with that. And they are cleaning it up, they gave...
The grounds are cleaned up.
They, they were supposed to do it, then it snowed and rained, but they are starting to move.
Yeah, they are. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ralph. Christian Dillon, a while ago, I asked you about that lot behind Warren Snyder. It's in the alleyway from Buckley Street to the school in the back there, goes up to the old canal. There's, there's signs there, $1,000 dumping fine. Couple of years ago, I cleaned up a construction site there on my own time, but now it's not, somebody dumped another load of construction material there. Did we ever find out who owns that lot?
Probably, but I don't remember at the moment.
Okay. Yeah, maybe, maybe we, we own it, or school owns it, or a private person, maybe, maybe we could put a fence there where they cannot dump and start cleaning that up, but it really, it really looks bad back there, so. All right, thank you. That's all I got.
If I could just interject on that, I, I plan on bringing that up tonight as well. I'm renovating a property over there, and there's a lot of dumping going on back there. I, we're looking at my deed for the house that I purchased, saying there's an alleyway that goes along there. The borough owns a portion of 200 feet by 12 feet wide, and then beyond that, I think it's the, I believe it to be the Delaware Canal portion of it, then it goes into the school property. But there's a, there's a lot of dumping back there, and there's, the trees are falling down, many of them are dead. I don't know if, you know, we just clean that up somehow and do something with it, but it, it's a mess back there.
Isn't that the alley? You're going down Buckley on the left, you turn in on the left.
I can. Which way are you going on Buckley?
Towards back.
I don't know, we can guess.
Right now.
It's a very sharp turn.
Right. I think we must have took truckloads of stuff out of there. And I don't understand, all them neighbors can't get a license plate or notify the police when this has gone on. I mean, even if it's at night, you got to hear something because they're not just throwing out, they're putting loads of...
I have my, yeah, I have my suspicions.
Well, I mean, it's very easy to catch somebody, they're going, maybe get a remote camera, or, you know, maybe we'll talk to the chief to see if we can set something up back there.
Also, I need to jump in front of you a little bit.
That's okay, go ahead.
Just, just on this topic, there, there's a telephone pole back there midway in that alleyway. I was wondering if we could put a street light up back there, that may, that may help out. It's very, very dark back there. I've got some spotlights up back there, but I think if we put a light on...
Well, where are you located to the alley? You have a property, like a, you own a property?
Yeah, I'm down, I'm going down towards, I'm down towards the end by Reagan's, Joe Reagan's.
But the dumping's towards the school.
Well, it's actually right on the alleyway. That, so if you made that left coming off of Buckley, you go down, and it turns around, and it goes towards CDM, you know, that hole behind there? Right at the end there, right where it turns, that's where all that dumping's going on, that whole, there's a swath of land back there, it's right in that area.
All right.
Louis, I wasn't going to mention it because it's, it's been sold out, but my boy has medical problems. They're having a benefit forum at the Moose, April 6th. It's been sold out forever, but if you want to give him a call, Brady, he's doing better. His cancer was downgraded, and I just can't believe the, I, I, my wife and I really weren't too involved. It was Greg McCucci and Larry Warren from the Pines, and I, there's so many people, all the restaurants, everybody, it's, it's going to be something else, so I thank you, thanks to everybody, and I'll, I'll let you know Monday how that turns out and Saturday. Thank you.
I have tickets for that, and we're donating a couple baskets to it.
Yeah, everybody's been great.
Yeah.
I can't express my appreciation enough. Thank you.
Tony, you want to finish? You have anything else, or?
I just had two items.
Go ahead.
Okay. I brought before about that, that lot at Market and Wood Street, where the, the old fine property was that we took down. There's people parking there, it's muddy, it's, it's across from the firehouse, Chief's firehouse there. It's a, it's a muddy pit, so when it rains, people are parking up there, and they're bringing the mud on to the, onto the roadway, it's all rutted up. I asked that we send a letter to the, to the property owner to make them do something. I don't know if we ever got a response, or if we sent a letter, or...
They've been cited in the hearing before the judge. I don't have the time.
I can look that.
This is the fellow that's an attorney who's taken us not only to the state Supreme Court, but also the United States Supreme Court.
Yeah, no, I understand.
He's, he's, he's unique.
Yeah, I had the pleasure of meeting him. It's just, it's just, it's, it's that whole area, we're fixing up Mill Street and, you know, and then just one block in, and it...
We're concerned about mosquitoes and...
And everything else, yeah.
So, believe me, the judge is very much aware of our concerns, so.
Okay. And then, and my last item, two months ago, brought up about, maybe looking at zoning for short, short-term rentals, like the Airbnb's, things like that. We're going to have the solicitor look until, I don't know, but we may.
He's done some preliminary work on it, so maybe in the next 30 days we'll have something to kind of ask him.
That's it, thank you.
Louis?
Yes. Last month, I was appointed to serve on the advisory committee for the dock maintenance program, and I, I've had a couple conversations with Mr. Williams and the Grundy Foundation. I, I've had a couple conversations with Mr. Williams and the Grundy Foundation. Through their generosity, uh, there's $250,000 in a fund to be used for maintenance and repairs of the dock, long-term, so they're, um, they're looking to keep the, the dock a successful program for a long time. Uh, Patty Samuels from Penn Community Bank will serve on that committee, uh, and the two community people, um, that I, I suggested in a meeting with Mr. Dillon and, and Mr. Salerno, um, were, and both these people have agreed to serve, is Merle Winslow, our emergency coordinator, manage, uh, emergency management coordinator, and, uh, and Pat Mulhern. Um, I think everybody's familiar with, with Merle and what he does, and I was thinking about Merle, 'cause he's always around, and he's always got his eyes out, and he's constantly in that area, if there's flooding, um, forecast, you know, he lets everybody know. So, uh, so Merle graciously accepted. Pat Mulhern's a, uh, businessperson, uh, he has kayaking and, um, canoeing business, uh, he runs it in Falls Township, uh, in the past he's worked also at Silver Lake, uh, but Pat spends a lot of time on the river, and he's aware of, you know, what's, what's along the, the riverfront there, so I thought, again, this is somebody who, uh, these, those guys are very hard-working people, and I know they'll do a good job, and, um, and is gonna maintain the, uh, the funding from, from Grundy. So I think this is gonna be a very successful, uh, successful, uh, committee. Um, the other thing I'd like to mention, I'd like to, uh, to, to thank, um, Lewis and Karen Dobson. Every year they have the Lou Dobson Memorial Pub Crawl, and, uh, it's really, it's an amazing event, I'm, I'm not a pub crawler, but, uh, I'm still a rookie, but, uh, but to see the people that are in town that day, and all...
700-plus.
Yeah, and all well, you know, everything looked like it was well-behaved, all the businesses, uh, were, talked about how successful they were, and it's no longer just a Bristol-Levitt Town kind of event. It's even, it's not even a, a Lower Bucks County event, it's, it's a regional event. My wife and I were on the train going to Philadelphia early that evening, and there were people on the train that had been at the pub crawl, and they were talking about it, and it was like, it was a fun thing to do, and they, and they were going back to the city for their, uh, where they live, so I, I think this is, you know, it's, it's a lot of hard work, and they, uh, they contribute these funds to scholarships, so it's, and it memorializes their, uh, their sons. So I think it's really, you know, they should be thanked for having such a, for being such hard workers on this. Uh, just one other thing, I'm gonna put a, a plug in here for the Rotary Club of Bristol. They have a pasta dinner on Sunday, it's April 7th, and 3:00 to 6:00 PM at the Snyder Girardi, uh, School, in the cafeteria. Uh, adults are $12, children over 10 are $6, and under 10, they're, uh, $6 for, for children 10 and younger, except for, under 4 is free. And all the proceeds benefit the, uh, Rotary Scholarship Fund. Last year we were able to give out $22,000 in, in scholarships, and to well-deserving, uh, students, and I, uh, while we're making this, while I'm making this plug, I'd also like the kids that are seniors, uh, the applications are online for scholarship, fund, uh, for the scholarships, so please apply, you know, it's, it's a good thing, so, uh, so that's it for me.
I think you have some students here tonight from Mr. Ollie's class, is that correct?
Okay.
And you do all the cook instead of, it's gotta be pretty good.
And we, Steve and I and my family go every, every time, and it, it's wonderful. Everyone should try to make it, very good.
Yes, Snyder Girardi from, from 3:00 to 6:00, and you can buy tickets to the...
We don't miss a meal, obviously.
Louis is a good cook, I can tell you that. Okay, uh, anything else, Louis?
No, that's it.
I just have a few things. This, Alcon, I don't know if anybody's been following this in the newspapers and different things, they wanna open up a facility in Falls Township. What the Borough's concerned is, and Dr. Rotini's, Melinda Rotini, who I have appointed as a Borough representative, has been unbelievable with this. I mean, she attends all the meetings, they're on board in town, and she goes all over to, to really keep the Borough updated on what's going on, and she met with me, Jim, and our solicitor, uh, about a week ago to give us another update. This could be very dangerous to the river, to trucks overturn, they're, they're really carrying some really serious chemicals on these tanker trucks. And we're trying to figure a way, if we can't stop it, how do we prevent it from using the state highway, which is Mill Street, Bad Street, Rattle Street, coming off of the turnpike on the Route 13, now at the 95 connection, all's been put in place. But if one of these trucks overturn, and the chemical starts getting into the, uh, river through our, you know, drainage systems, it could be very detrimental to what's going on, and I know the fire chief, and everybody's gonna be involved in this, and there's gonna be a lot of training that's involved, we don't have the manpower to handle some major spills of this magnitude. So I wanna thank Dr. Rotini for doing this for Bristol. I'll keep council updated on what's going on, but, you know, it hasn't been approved yet through the, as far as I know, the Bucks County Zoning Board, Planning Commission, and the Falls Township Planning Commission, both have denied this, right?
The, the Falls Township Planning Commission has denied it. The Bucks County Planning Commission has some serious questions. It's, has not been before the Falls Township Supervisors yet, but there are some questions about whether this is a permitted use in that zone. So it's, it's not a done deal yet.
But you wanna explain how dangerous this could be?
It's chemical waste that's gonna be, they say it's not being burned, it's supposed to be a some type of new technology from the Middle East or whatever, but our concern is the transportation has to get there somehow, and if it's gonna be on trucks, we, we're concerned that they're gonna come through Bristol through 13, or, or whatever, uh, or even trains will come through Bristol. So we're really concerned that, that they somehow control that, because, uh, like Ralph said, it's so proximate to the river, any spill, we're not gonna get to in time. And before you know it, it's gonna be in our stormwater system in the river and affect, uh, our water supply. So we're keeping an eye on it, and there are groups that I think are gonna oppose this, and we're working with them, uh, and, uh, we'll see what happens. It can come before the Falls Township Supervisors, probably as early as May, um, for, for a vote.
If they deny it, do you expect the court battle to follow?
Oh, definitely. I mean, there's so much money in this.
There's big money in...
Remember, they've been working on this for at least five, seven years, this company? Um, and, uh, yeah, certainly they'll, if they're denied, they'll appeal it. But we'll see what happens.
I just wanted to update anybody, just in case you're reading about it, or, you know, we're not aware of it, we are aware of it, and we have a representative attending every meeting that takes place, and again, we can't thank her enough for the time she's putting into this.
What, uh, you say her name once, one more time? The representative?
Dr. Melinda Rotini.
Thank you.
The other thing is, the AOC has requested the use of the Public Works Building again for their fundraiser, just to let council know. Do we have to vote on this, or it's okay just to?
I think council should authorize it, because that way it's covered by insurance and all.
So we'll make that an agenda item for Monday night. Uh, we're doing a shred event in town, we did this before, and, uh, I had the manager set up May 4th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So any Borough resident that wants to shred anything that they had around, any important documents or anything...
Where will that be, right here?
Right here in front of Borough Hall, right out front.
I think we're gonna use the parking lot over...
The senior center?
Senior Center, we'll put the truck over there, bring that vehicles, and come in and drop it off, and then out. That's the way we did it a few years ago. I think it'll be safer that way, but we'll, we'll get the...
The last one was right out front, unless we moved it later on.
Who was that telling?
So it's gonna be Saturday, May 4th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So like I said, any Borough resident that wants anything, they wanna shred, important documents, bring them here, and, and we'll take care of it for you. The sweeper is going to start on Thursday, April 25th. So there'll be a, maybe a grace period for one week, and then tickets will start being issued. The Borough's not looking to give anyone a ticket, we wanna keep our streets clean going into the summer months. So we're, we really would like you to move your vehicle for that short period of time, and let the street sweeper keep our streets nice and clean. The other thing I just wanna, and this isn't a done deal yet, and it may not even happen, we've been in talks with a couple people to open up a, uh, supermarket in the old Walmart. So I don't wanna give you the name of the company or what's going on, but we, I had, I had taken them around last week, I drove them through town, I drove them through the township, and introduced them to some people in town, and they seem very interested. Whether they, the deal gets put together or not, we don't know, but, you know, they have a meeting in a couple weeks that, uh, it looks pretty promising, but a lot of things look promising when you're dealing with major corporations, and the last minute they fall through, but, uh, I'll, I'll definitely know something by May, let's put it that way. And I think that's all I have. Jim, what do you have?
Uh, just the, uh...
All right, Joe, you wanna go?
Doesn't matter to me.
Want them to finish and then go to you?
Yeah, go ahead.
For the agenda next week, uh, will also be the proposal, it's...
Providing, uh, uh, to provide additional protection for the care of animals, this is the blue and, uh, red code for animals, uh, and, uh, the last thing would be, uh, you award the contract to the low bidder for the installation of handicap curbs on Wilson and Rello, and, uh, Wilson and Garfield, and now 15,000. Low bidder was, uh, Vintreska and Sons Incorporated. So that'll be on the agenda, that's all I have. Louis, you have anything?
No.
Joe?
Yeah, I have a couple things. Um, Snyder Girardi, the police there graduation will be May 16th. I don't think we have anything yet for St. Mark. We've been working with the, uh, the manager and the Streets and Highway Department on various parking and traffic issues, um, getting some curb yellow lines extended and signs put out, and dealing with some challenges that, uh, have been called into us. Um, and the Fire Department, the Prom, Promise Program will be, what is it, May?
May 8th.
May 8th, 2019. It's a program that the Fire Department, the Department of Rescue Squad has been involved with for, I'd say, probably at least the last 10 years, um, where we get the kids at the high school, and we do a whole program relative to not drinking and so forth, and accidents, and it's really unique. Um, let's see. We've, we had a request from the county to go back and look in the fire service to ensure that the, uh, the Borough, in calling in mutual aid, if there's a fire and we have to bring somebody in from another township, that we're calling the closest, uh, Fire Department. Doesn't seem, you know, when you think about it, it's not real important, but it really is. And the police chief, or police chief, fire chief and, um, his deputies reviewed all the box cards in town and verified, I believe I sent a letter to Mr. Dillon and to the county, that the, uh, our box cards are in line with calling the closest, uh, mutual aid company. Also too, at our recent Fire Board meeting, we discussed the new fire alarm panel that was installed in the Grundy Towers. Uh, I received a letter from the Bristol Elks announcing their annual Flag Day Ceremony Program held at Lyons Park, will be June, uh, June the 9th at 1:00 PM. If you've never attended that, you should try and attend it, it's, it's a pretty interesting ceremony. It's about 45 minutes, they go through the whole history of the flag, involved with the Boy Scouts and some other, um, units there, and it's, it's really, really good, especially if you have younger kids, bring them. Uh, also, working with the Grundy Library and Eric Olarca, who is their, uh, exhibit coordinator, um, this year in October, they're gonna be doing a presentation on the day in the life of a first responder. So we're gonna be coordinating that effort with the four fire stations in town, uh, the fired, or the chief of police, and the rescue squad. They'll each have their own little sections, and that'll run for the month of October. And on a, on a very happy note, over the weekend, someone dropped off a, uh, big pile of letters to me. Actually, there are 20 students from Mrs. Auer's class, second grade class at Snyder Girardi, um, and they had a student teacher that day, I believe her name was Morgan Cullen, and they were reviewing on, um, some English and how to, how to write letters and so forth. So they were asked a question, make a suggestion to your town leaders, what do you, what do you need, what do you think the town needs? And if I can, I'd just like to read like, too short.
Take your time. You listened to us all night.
That's why I did that. But I just wanted to read a couple of them. The, I'll say this, the major theme in the 20 seemed to be a lot about dogs and dog parks and happy dogs, and about trees, and, um, trees are here, they're our friends, and, uh, it cleaned, they clean up the stinky air. But these other three were, were kind of a little bit different. Says, "Dear Mayor, I think we need more schools," and this is coming from a second grader, "so more kids can learn and get better with stuff. And kids can get amazing achievements, so they have more freedom. So when the kids grow up, they can pass college. Sincerely, Joseph." Another one we have was, "Dear Mayor, we need this so we can have fun. We need to keep the equipment dry. Make a big umbrella around the playground over at the school, so the children can play on rainy days. We need more swings. Thank you. Sincerely, Jasmine." Last one I'll read is, "Dear Mayor, I think our town needs a little wooden platform and a roof, and you can go in the morning and night. We need it because people need more exercise. We need it because people need more energy with their legs, arms, and hands. We need it because we need to get stronger. We are getting stronger from lifting stuff. Sincerely, Luke." And one of them drew a nice picture of me with nice curly hair.
I have to add to this, my daughter is the teach, the student teacher, and, um, she was trying to tell them, "Send it to my mom," she's a councilwoman, and the kids were like, "or the mayor, either one," and they, and Luke happens to be his grandson in that class, and they said, "We're gonna go with the mayor, it's Luke's grandfather." So that was the teacher, you know, we, we loved it, we, we thought it was a riot, so, it's good.
Enjoyable, they really were.
That's it.
Other than you?
A couple of quick things. Uh, one, uh, where are we with the mural ordinance?
We're working on that. We could get some in light of...
Yeah.
We're trying, trying to draft it to do what we wanna do in light of some constraints that everyone's encountering in the entire country, so. Something dramatic.
Monday, do you guys wanna try to meet at 6:30 instead of 7:00 due to the game, or 7 o'clock's fine, and?
Definitely 6:30.
I mean, it's just, what I'm saying, we can't, right? All right, 7 o'clock is just an agenda item, we're voting and we're leaving, so there's no, nothing really to discuss. Something else? My mind. So just to give council an update, over the last several years, we had major issues at Grundy... at Grundy Towers with the generator. We've been working very hard to get a new generator put into that building. Myself, Mr. Dillon, and a couple congressmen and county commissioners, and we finally got them a new generator and the access of about $350,000, which is being installed. It's being installed as we speak, and to borough, you know, although the county has a lot of sites, they really stepped up, and they, they did a lot for us to put this generator in, so hopefully, it's not gonna power 100% in the building, but it's gonna be, you know, they're gonna have heat in the winter, they're gonna have the necessary electric they need for oxygen tanks and different things like that, emergency lighting, elevators are gonna be working, you know, so a lot of stuff that is going on to this generator is really gonna help them out a lot, and, you know, we got a great relationship right now with the, you know, Grundy Towers and the seniors, and I feel as a councilman, it's our job to make sure they get treated the way they're supposed to get treated, because it's our voice that represents them. So as long as I'm sitting here and they know that, I'm gonna do everything I can for that building. So I just want you to know, the generator's going in, and the borough waived the permit fee on that, I don't know if it needs to be voted on or not, but that, the county was really strapped, and they had to upgrade, and we felt that Jim made a decision that that was the right thing to do, so, is that something we need to vote on for Monday, or no?
I don't believe so, but I don't believe so.
I just, well, you know how people are, comes back and saying, you know, but the building, they're gonna be in good shape, so, again, I'm glad they got their generator.
Comment on that, Mr. Chairman?
Part of it.
I said, comment on that?
Sure.
I wanna thank you and, and the borough manager and everybody else that worked on it. I mean, a lot of people probably don't realize the challenge that we have in a major event when power goes out in town and dealing with that building. The one generator that was there was not enough, even though it provided some service to the residents, it was not enough, and the second generator will surely eliminate, or most likely eliminate, most of what we would have to do, like in evacuations, from that building. So that goes a long way in ensuring the safety of the people who live in that building. So, great job.
The last thing is, don't forget, Little League opening day is, I think, next Sunday?
13th.
13th, right, next Sunday.
Okay.
Is that Saturday?
I think it's Saturday.
I think it's Saturday.
Saturday, Saturday.
I have my calendar.
Next Saturday at 11:00. If you can make it, would be nice to.
Yeah, it's not this Saturday, it's the following.
Next Saturday.
Next Saturday.
It's not the 11th.
That's the 13th.
May 13th, correct?
Yeah, April 13th.
13th. We're all in our place tonight.
And the chief's saying it's two weeks from.
It's not this Saturday. It's the following Saturday.
Okay, all right.
Why don't you announce when it is?
Two Saturdays from, the second Saturday.
It's April 13th.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Motion to adjourn.
I second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Pezzis, second, I was calling.